Councilmember Bolosan.
Here.
Councilmember Cavallio.
Here.
Councilmember Cowden.
Here.
Councilmember Holland.
Present.
Councilmember Conishiro.
Present.
Councilmember Kooli'i.
Present.
Council Chair Opozo.
Here.
All present.
Can I get a motion to approve the amendment, please?
Okay.
Move and second it. Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair, next item is on page two, the minutes of the following meeting of the council, the October fifteenth, twenty twenty five, public hearing regarding Bill number two nine seven two and Bill nine two nine seven four.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
Next item is an interview for the Kauai Historic Preservation Review Commission for Juliet Souza at Large for a partial term ending twelve thirty one twenty six.
With that, I will suspend the rules.
Good morning. Ellen Cheng, Boards and Commissions Administrator. On behalf of Chair Opozo, I'm happy to introduce council nominee Juliette, or Julie Souza, for the at-large position on the Kauai Historic Preservation Review Commission. Julie was born and raised on Kauai, attended Koloa School, and graduated from Kauai High School. She continued her education at Honolulu Business College to pursue a degree in computer science. Her education was interrupted when she returned home to care for her mother. This is where her career in the hospitality industry at Waiohi started, where she worked for twenty-nine years until Hurricane Iniki struck. She continued working in the industry at Keahuna Plantation and at the Lawai Beach Resort until nineteen ninety-seven, when she was hired by Mayor Kusaka as the Information and Complaints Officer. She served three mayors, Mayor Kusaka, Mayor Baptiste, and Mayor Cavallio, after ten years with the county. In twenty eleven, Julie retired. Like most retirees, Julie is busier than ever. If she looks familiar, Julie attended the last council meeting to testify on the trees in Koloa. Julie comes from an illustrious family that is steeped in a history of community service and music. Her cousin Linda Della Cruz was known as Hawaii's Canary. She was honored twice as an inductee in the Hawaiian Music Hall of Fame, and worked as an activist for Hawaiian rights, and served on the Board of Trustees for the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. Julie's uncle was the legendary Anton Kea Vidina, Kauai's first mayor. Her father, brother, and uncle have served in police departments on Kauai and in Honolulu. In her younger days, Julie liked to travel, but now keeps closer to home. The one exception is Vegas. She has a trip planned with her music group to entertain at her friend's Lual. She loves Hawaiian music. Her favorite song to sing is Oma Kalapua. Julie is very active in the community, and is also the chair of the advisory board of the Office of Aging. Julie keeps telling me, "I'm eighty years old," and I keep telling her, "You mean eighty years young." When you meet her, it's evident that Julie just loves people and wants to share her kindness, love, and aloha. She's lived her entire life in Koloa. I'm so excited and grateful that Julie is willing to share her mana'o, time and experience, with the Kauai Historic Preservation Review Commission.
Thank you. Any additional comments for us before we start asking questions? Well, thank you very much for being here today and for agreeing to serve on the Historic Preservation Commission. Any questions for Auntie Julie? Go ahead, Ms.
I actually, well, I have a question. I'm not sure who is her. Are you still be on elderly affairs, though, too? Because you can do, she can do, too? Because you're great at that one. I don't have a lot of questions, because I think you're just perfect. I appreciate how knowledgeable you are and how involved you are and how much energy you have, and how many events that you have so much. Your breadth of knowledge of the community is very impressive, so I think you're perfect. I don't even have any warnings for you. I think you're perfect for it. So, thank you for volunteering, and thank you for having her. And this is a partial term, but she can get reappointed, right?
All right. Any other questions for Auntie Julie?
No questions, comments?
Go ahead.
I just want to thank you, Auntie Julie. It's such a perfect position for you to be in. You have so much knowledge. Just in the times that I got to talk a story with you about Koloa, for those kapakai's, I learned so much, and I think it's a perfect opportunity. And yeah, thank you so much for being willing to do it.
Thank you. I'm sort of looking forward to it, you know, because of the love that I have for Kauai and for what we've got nobody else has in the whole United States.
Mr. Kooli'i.
I just wanted to say mahalo nui loa for your longtime service to our county and to our community, and mahalo for your continued service. I did have a really important question. When is the Lual in Vegas?
Make sure we get the invite. Make sure we get the invite.
We'll sing. This is unwhole for us, you know, the second one we're going to over there.
I know for a fact you won't have to ask you pukai to like.
No, just Julie, thank you so much. Just Kauai Historic, we are historic, hello, and a lot of good things, you know, throughout our times, and working in a community, and just stepping up. So, very thankful and look forward to you serving, and it'll be awesome.
Thank you.
And your beautiful music, of course, just kulele, right?
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I just want to say I'll be in full support of your nomination, and yeah, thank you for still being willing to serve and help the community.
Mr. Bolosan?
I just want to echo again everything that was shared, especially in this time, your knowledge and your experience, especially on this board, is going to be very helpful. I mentioned earlier, as they're celebrating historic times, it's crucial for people like me and our younger generations to have these connections with you and have this knowledge, and make sure all the work that this board does to continue to work, so we, that, don't we forget where we come from, and more importantly, learn from the mistakes from the past, so that we don't repeat them again. So, it's one of the most important things that we have here, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? If not, thank you again. I look forward to you being on that commission. That is the right commission for you. You know, many of us, not just here on the council, but in commissions, or everyone uses Google to look up history of certain things, and in this case, I think you are more informative than Google search, because you just have the knowledge that you have of this place and this culture, that was evident in the discussions regarding Koloa and Poi'pu. So, I look forward to your presence on that commission and giving a perspective that many of us do not have. Many of what you, much of what you know has already been forgotten, so you get to bring that back. So, thank you again.
You know, I'm pretty fortunate to have my uncle as my leader, because he, too, loved Kauai so very much. So, we learn from him, and I thank him every day. I thank my auntie for correcting my English every day. She was an English teacher, and she was really on it, you know, but I'm looking forward to it. I hope I don't step on too many toes, but if we do, it's the toes that we need to step on to get our island to be our island, our home, our rule-ness of Kauai.
Well, to the other commissioners on the Historic Preservation Commission, fasten your seatbelts, because Hurricane Julie is coming. And you and your group perform weekly at the Aloha Craft Cafe, which is right there at the old Lehuay plantation building, and.
And DMV. We have homes in there, yeah.
Okay. So, if you guys want to go hear Julie and her pals, go check them out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. I'll do my best.
All right. All righty, next item, please.
Chair, next item are items on the consent calendar for receipt, C two zero two five dash two two six and C two zero two five dash two two seven.
Move to receive.
Okay.
If you move and second it. Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
Next item is a communication, C two zero two five dash two two eight, communication from the county engineer and the planning director requesting council approval to receive an expensive routes to school special program funds from the Hawaii State Department of Transportation in the amount of two million dollars for the Kalahailo SRTS project, which enables and encourages children to walk and bicycle to school.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Any discussion or public testimony? You have a question?
No, I mean, I'm appreciative that it's happening. Two million seems like a lot, but I'm completely supportive of it. It's two million dollars. Are they putting in lines, or are they putting in sidewalks?
Make it safer for our kids. It'll be sidewalks.
Sidewalks.
Yeah, it'll be sidewalks, and it'll realign the road. There's making everything ADA compliant, and the things that are, you know, I guess my only caution is to make sure we do the community discussion and not have another Koloa Poi'pu, which, you know, thirteen years ago, and then today we're dropping the bomb. So, just keep the community, as Julie just said, so important to keep their input relevant, so we're not surprising people when they start digging up the road.
Yeah, so for two million, I was hoping it was real sidewalks, because in Kilauea, which I'm happy with our improvements, it was lines, you know, on the streets, and just, so I was, just wanted to make sure it was, for that much money, is, you know, I guess some concrete, so I'm fine.
It'll also include bus stops and bus shelters as well, so it'll be a complete redo, so awesome. All right, anyone else? If not, the motion is to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
C two zero two five dash two two nine, communication from the county engineer requesting council approval to accept reimbursements from the Hawaii Local Technical Assistance Program, or LTAP, for travel-related expenses incurred as a result of attending various off-island training events sponsored by the United States Department of Transportation Federal Highway Administration during fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Reimbursements are estimated to range between a hundred fifty dollars to three hundred fifty dollars per day, per travel day, per person per travel day, excuse me.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
C two zero two five dash two three zero, communication from the mayor submitting for council confirmation, the appointment of Tyler Seital as a county attorney effective November third, twenty twenty-five, at nine AM.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion or public testimony?
Chair, we do have two members registered to speak.
Okay, hang on. With that, I'll suspend the rules. Registered speaker.
First registered speaker is Walton Hong, followed by Moniquee Trask.
Good morning, Chairman Opozo and Members of the Council. For the record, my name is Walton Hong, and I am here in support of Tyler Seital's nomination as a county attorney for the county of Kauai. I am the current chairman of Kauai Police Commission, although I am appearing before you as a private citizen. I only got to know Tyler for just about a year when he was assigned as legal counsel to the police commission. Tyler sits next to the chair, giving necessary counseling to ensure that the commission is not violating any laws, rules, or regulations. I was an attorney practicing on Kauai for more than fifty years. I was also a per diem district and family court judge for eighteen years. Before coming to Kauai in nineteen seventy-two, I was a deputy attorney general for the state of Hawaii, and one of my assignments was legal counsel to the State Land use Commission. This is a role similar that Tyler plays now with the police commission. During my years of experience, I have seen many changes in how agencies, boards, and commissions operate. Now, the procedural requirements here have become very complex, and failure to adhere to them can have undesirable consequences. Tyler is one of the most knowledgeable people I know of in the area of administrative law. He has guided the police commission through the regulatory requirements in a manner that I would not have expected. He has proven himself to be proactive in anticipating potential problems, and has even provided the commission with suggestions and options in a timely manner as warranted. Tyler's preparation for the commission's meetings is at a level that I believe all attorneys should be following. Tyler has also displayed the degree of integrity and responsibility that all attorneys should possess. He does not permit the commission to follow a course of action which might be violative of the sunshine law. And as another example of the character he possesses, Tyler is now, or has been heavily involved in the process of selecting the new chief of police. As you know, we are in that process. Because of this involvement and a desire to ensure that the selection process is beyond question, he has represented to the police commission that even if confirmed as next county attorney for this county, he will continue counseling the police commission until the selection, until the selection of a new chief of police is completed. I know my support of Tyler's nomination is based solely on my working with him during meetings involving the police commission. However, I'm sorry, I'm just.
I agree. I'm following along in writing, so you only have another sentence, so go ahead and finish.
Thank you. However, I firmly believe that his display of knowledge, work ethic, and character are ingrained in him, and his legal assistance to the police commission clearly illustrate and support this. For these reasons, I humbly and sincerely ask that you confirm Tyler Seital as Kauai's next county attorney, as he can only be a definite asset to this county. Respectfully submitted.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next is Moniquee Trask.
Morning. Morning. Aloha. For the record, Moniquee Trask, I wanted to testify today in support of Tyler. I haven't had the opportunity to work with him personally. I haven't been on the opposite side or the same side by any matter. However, I do maintain communication with people in the county, and I do believe that the county attorney's office is one of the most important positions in the county. It has extreme amount of power. It's not an elected office, and it's really based upon service. It's a difficult job, because you have to render legal advice without passion or prejudice, and despite your own feelings, what you would like it to be. And I know that firsthand. You're also in the middle of heavy-duty politics. You serve in the civil arena, but probably would be adverse clients. You have to serve both, on behalf of the community, because ultimately, your client, like Chair Opozo always says, it is the people of Kauai. I did have an occasion to speak with Tyler briefly. Seems like he has a steady hand. He's a calm presence. I know that he worked at the prosecutor's office for a number of years. That's not an easy job either. You have to make very real decisions that impact families' lives, community, you know, organization, peace. And so, most importantly, speaking with the people I still know in the county, they all speak very highly of Tyler. That's not something easy to do, because I know he hasn't said yes to all of them. You simply can't. So, I don't want to belay the point, but I think, based upon what I have seen, and why, more importantly, what I've heard, he's the right man for this job. Thank you.
Thank you. No more registered speakers?
No further registered speakers.
Anyone else? Mr. Hart?
For the record, Bruce Hart, as a member of the public, an active member within the community and within the government, I'd like to welcome onboard Tyler Seital. I think that he's competent, and he's knowledgeable, and that he will be an asset to this county and to this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Tate?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Joe Tate, for the record, members of the council, it is an honor to be here for two reasons today. One, to confirm, I won't repeat, but confirm what the statements were by the folks in front of me about Tyler. I won't go any farther. That'll get too emotional. But I also want to thank Matt for his leadership since I've been at the county. What a perfect transition of two people, fine gentlemen, and qualified and overqualified for the role that they are transitioning from and to, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is that an Aloha Airlines shirt you're wearing? An old Aloha Airlines? Anyone else in the audience wishing to testify? Seeing none, I'll call a meeting back to order. Any further discussion, Ms.?
Can we have Tyler and Matt up in front of us?
If you want.
I do.
Okay. The rules are suspended. Tyler, you're going to get used to this, bro. You've got a nice mustache growing now.
Okay, well, first of all, Tyler, thank you for being willing, and I want to say, we got a whole host of letters from people that you worked with directly that really feel good about, assuming Matt's choice and your choice to put you here. Do you want to share anything about your motivation and vision?
Thank you, Councilwoman. Good morning, Council. Tyler Seital, for the record. I think Matt has set up our office well to move forward in a very positive way, to continue to serve the county, and that means the mayor's office, the departments, and you all here at the council. I do intend to continue to modernize our office. I'd like to adopt the new case management and matter management system that incorporates more of the new modernizing technologies such as AI. AI is here, and I think the legal field is adjusting, and we need to be able to keep up with that evolution. I'd also like to continue to retain our attorneys. I think they're excellent legal minds, and continue to serve the county well. And I'd like to continue to work with all of you, and continue to maintain our good working relationship across the county. But I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. And one of the letters had something that surprised me. It says you ride rodeo?
In high school, I did rodeo.
Okay, you're not doing it now?
Not right now. I don't think I can set a horse anymore, but I did go to nationals three years in a row, so.
And what was your event?
I did a boys' cutting.
You did what?
Boys' cutting, cutting.
Okay, all right. That's nice. And Matt, I want to be able to tell you, thank you for the job that you've done, and it's going to be hard to lose you. I'm really encouraged by all the great letters I'm hearing about Tyler. I think tomorrow's your last day, or is today your last day?
Matt Bracken County Attorney, Friday.
Friday. So, do you have anything you want to share to us as you abandon us?
You're in good hands. Tyler will take really good care of you, so I'm, I have complete faith in him, so I'm not worried about anything. It'll be, I'm sure it'll be a smooth transition, and he will provide excellent legal advice to you all, so, but thank you.
Okay, well, you've meant a lot to us, and me, and thank you, thank you, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. With that, I'll call a meeting back to order. Any further discussion? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to echo the gratitude. It's been wonderful working with Mr. Bracken, and I'm very much looking forward to you taking over. So, thank you very much, both of you guys, for all your hard work.
Anyone else? Mr. Conisher?
Yeah, no, I want to thank Matt, too, for all your service throughout the years, and Tyler, you know, I have a lot of confidence in you coming on. It was like years ago, Tim Richards told me, hey, do you know this guy, Tyler Seital? He's my good friend, and I think you were at the prosecuting attorney's office at that time, and I was happy to try and text him and tell him, hey, you know, Tyler's most likely going to be our new county attorney, so it's pretty exciting to see you and your progression, and how you've grown to the county, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Bolosan.
Yeah, I just want to echo the shared mahalo again, Matt, for all you've done and continue doing. I'm sure you're going to serve in a greater capacity for our community. We're in such interesting times that requires people to be level-headed and on top of their game, especially in this field of work. And probably the most important thing, too, is also remember that the work is about the community, so you've done a great job serving the community. And Tyler, welcome to the top. Hope you enjoy all the punches, and you know all the role that it takes, and you've risen to this place because you serve the community, so I'm looking forward to representing our community in the best way possible, and excited to work with you so we can serve our community.
Mr. Cavallio? Mahalo, Matt. Back on the way. Oh, sorry.
Thank you so much for your service, and all the things that we've gone through in the past, but great job, and then the transition over to Tyler. Tyler, knowing you a long time, and then transitioning over, and you're taking the lead now, so there's a lot of stuff that we've got to talk story on, all of us, but just the leadership from one to the next is positive, and I think it's a great, great thing, so good job.
Mr. Kooli'i?
Yeah, I, too, want to say mahalo nui loa to you, Matt. Mahalo for your dedicated service, for your sound advice, and for always being pleasant and professional. I really enjoyed working with you. All the best to you with what comes next. And then, congratulations to you, Tyler. Welcome aboard. Look forward to working with you more closely.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll just say, for Matt, thank you. It's been an extreme pleasure. The relationship between the county council and the county attorney's office has been wonderful, and Matt, you've been very accessible, weekends, holidays, nights. I'm sure you, when you see my caller ID on your phone, you're like, oh, crisis, but you've helped us get through several issues, and just your whole office has been very supportive of what we do here. So, yes, you will be missed, and I'm still upset that you are leaving, but it is what it is. I only wish the best for you, because you're a good guy. You deserve it. Tyler, you've got big shoes to fill. I did work with Tyler in the prosecutor's office for a length of time, and I actually, he has the buckle to prove. I mean, if you line up everybody in this room, and you said, you know, pick the one you think is a rodeo star, he would probably be the last one, but he's a legitimate rodeo star, and he's an amazing attorney, a very, very smart and knowledgeable. And, yeah, I had some tough cases with him in the prosecutor's, but he's so meticulous and careful and cautious, and that's what we need here in a county, so I would appreciate the opportunity to work with you. And again, you will hate to receive our calls at weekends and holidays and nights, but we expect that, because that's your job. So, anyway, with that, I'm excited for both of you. If there's no more discussion, the motion is to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Of course not. Motion carried. Next item, please.
Page three, C two zero two five dash two three one, communication from the emergency management administrator requesting council approval to apply for receipt and expend recurring United States Department of Homeland Security DHS grant funds via the state of Hawaii Department of Law Enforcement, Kauai Emergency Management Agency, in the amount of a hundred fifty thousand dollars with a fifty percent cost match for fiscal year twenty twenty-five emergency management performance grant to be used for one existing Kauai Emergency Management Agency staff position that supports day-to-day prevention, protection, mitigation, response, and recovery activity. mitigation, response, and recovery activities, along with travel for preparedness training and exercises that the County of Kohei staff are offered to attend, and the purchase of equipment to allow the emergency operations center to continue to operate uninterrupted.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
C2025-232, communication from the housing director requesting council approval to dispose of various records pursuant to Hawaii Statute Section 46-43 and Resolution Number 2021-48 as amended, which have been kept for over seven years and are no longer of use or value, and include finance and accounting records which have been retained for more than seven years, and Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program records which have been retained for at least three years.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
C2025-233, communication from the Director of Parks and Recreation requesting council approval to accept a donation from Nanotech 2000 of their acoustic detector product in an effort to mitigate the coconut rhinoceros beetles as part of a trial program at the Waialua Golf Course with a total estimated value of $600, which will be used to identify infestations.
Move to approve of the thank you letter to Nanotech 2000.
Second.
Thank you. Move to second. Any discussion or public testimony?
I have a simple question, it's probably for Fern. You're familiar with this?
Yep.
Yes? So, yay, another thing, right? It's an and, not a nor, we want to do, so this is like a surfactant?
This is a surf- No, this is an acoustic detector. I've got a little flyer for you guys.
Yeah, what does, what does that mean?
It actually helps to detect infestations by sound, so it's, it's just another tool that I'm trying to equip within, I don't even know if you guys want, but it's basically, it's a tool that helps to identify based upon the sound that the beetle makes while it's active, and so it's another way to identify potential infestations. I don't even-
So, it, it, okay, are we, are we going through all of this?
We don't need to, I mean, it's, this just kind of is what the manufacturer shared with us about how they're doing it. These guys address beetle infestations across the world. They're currently working in Bahrain on some date palm beetle issues, and they're finding this successful, and so it's just another tool that they offered to us, and I, why say no?
Why say no?
That's basically-
This $600 item, is it just one little detector unit?
I, my understanding is it's just a, yeah, it's one box kind of detector.
And so, do you know, like, what square footage or anything, like, are we gonna put that at the golf course and check it out, or where?
It's mobile, so it's, it's not huge, where it has to live somewhere forever, but it's, it's something that we can potentially share with other community groups working on this issue, maybe partner with those that need it. We're gonna try it out and see, you know, if it helps us identify places where there's higher activity, maybe it'll help us determine which trees need to be prioritized, maybe it's something we can use to move around our parks. Yeah, I've just been saying yes to pretty much anything about CRV.
Pretty much anything, because, so this is, this is just a donation, right? We're not even spending the money on it, but so-
Yeah.
We, we did go out there to the golf course, and it was very instructive, and there's clearly a profound problem there, and-
Yes.
Very clearly. And so they would set this somewhere, and they'd be-
I mean, I feel like that, that site's not really where you would detect an infestation, because we know that there's an infestation, but it, like, say, for example, we wanted to put it in Lydgate and see if we are starting to see infestations in the trees at Lydgate, or maybe we hear that there could be a potentially infestation along the State River Park, and we could put it over by cocoa palms or something, so I'm not 100% sure how it works, but once we accept it, I'm gonna, you know, know more and be able to get it, but basically, it's just to help detect further infestation.
Okay, so we'll, we'll learn something, and if it's somehow amazing, then we can probably buy more.
Yeah, and, yeah, hopefully we can partner with other organizations that are trying to, you know, address this threat, and, yeah.
All right, thank you for that.
Anyone else? Would that also suspend the rules? Mr. Hart?
For the record, Bruce Hart, we all know how serious this is, and yet I see a lot of humor in this, all those cartoons, detective cartoons, and then all the jokes that have been made over the years in regards to the work of detective work, and I see this, what my understanding is, is that it's able to recognize the sounds of the rhinoceros beetle, and I've heard, I'm, I'm not sure, but they're using AI, and the AI is actually tracking down these bugs, and I just get a kick out of that. I just think that's really something, is this gonna track these things down by the sounds they're making, and if it works, it'd be a real asset to not only this county, but worldwide, because these beetles are, they're really spreading rapidly. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Seitzels?
For the record, Lonnie Seitzels. I'd like to thank the councilwoman for pursuing this. I was a profitable farmer on Maui in the mid-'70s through around 2000. In the time that I was invested in farming, we averaged three new invasive species every single year that impacted the crops that I grew, which were apple bananas, purple sweet potatoes, and tropical flowers and foliage, and so every year, it became more difficult to successfully farm because the insects eat your profit. So, here it is, 20-some years later, there's probably more than three insects a year being introduced into the state, and since the Great Recession, the Department of Ag's budget for the people that deal with these issues have been massively slashed, and so part of the solution to this is our state legislators need to be providing the money to the Department of Ag if they're serious about pursuing agriculture in Hawaii, because currently, I would not go back into business, certainly not what I was doing before, right? For, if I wanted to raise crops, I would do it all indoors, and that way you have control over your environment, but your production expense is substantially more than doing it in the field, so I'm very supportive of this, and if you need a test site, come to where Mel and I live, because they're leaving the shoreline and are now eating the coconut palms in Waialua House Lots. So, thank you very much, and I hope AI is the solution to the bugs. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No, I call a meeting back to order, any further discussion?
So, Fern, this is a, is an AI product, so there would probably be something where you pay some sort of subscription?
I'm not sure what level of AI intersects with this. I don't, I'm not totally clear on that. I, I am understanding that it is a recording device that records and basically picks up almost like a fish finder for, for insects, for lack of a better explanation, that says, yes, it's likely that there's an infestation in this area. That's all I really know at this point.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And I appreciate you guys engaging in it. It is spreading rapidly out through Waialua, and we're gonna need this more and more if we're gonna try to fight back, so it's just one other tool in this realm.
Your slide six on your presentation-
Yeah.
-talks about how it's done.
How it's in-
Kind of bizarre, using fiber optics.
Yeah, yeah.
It, it just isolates the sounds, and then it, hmm, who knows, what the heck is a CRV?
If it works, it works, great.
Yeah, I, too, just want to say mahalo nui loa for your efforts, and at the risk of stating the obvious, I know you're probably working with Parks and Rec and other parts of the administration, I just wanted to say, this is a donation, it's $600, and-
Yeah, minor.
-so easy to support, right? But if you come across anything that even costs a little bit of money, a small investment would be so worth this very serious problem that we're having to deal with. I mean, when you think about our native Hawaiian culture, and you think about the Cocoa Palms Hotel property site, you think about the Royal Coconut Coast, I mean, if that ultimately gets devastated by this coconut rhinoceros beetle, then it would be such a huge loss, so-
Yes.
The administration, I'm sure at this point of the year, has in their budgets unexpended surplus funds. If we need a money bill, we can do that as well, so I know you're very passionate about it, and whatever support we can give to you, let us know.
Thank you, Mr. Hart.
Go ahead.
I just want to say that I'm encouraged that there's more and more items, and we had this successful steam experiment on, thank you for, you know, creating that with the, with the golf course, and I was fortunate to be over there and, and watch the success as the steam happened on the compost pile, and I'm thankful that, like, we can probably look for some grants and do it to Kisk or something like that, you know?
Yeah, I'll just say that there's, there's definitely not gonna be any one solution for this, like, it's not gonna be one $600 donation, it's not gonna be one big grant. This is a island-wide, comprehensive, integrated pesticide response that's needed from, you know, actual applications of pesticides, dealing with the steaming, the larvae, all of these different things. I've got three different traps going in my front yard, it looks like a disco at night with all the blue lights, but I'm trying all the things, and it's, we're gonna watch the Royal Coconut Coast be devastated over the next five to 10 years unless there's way more action than the county can ever do, and so this is a call to the state, you know, and the federal government. I've been pushing for federal support from Department of Defense, I've been asking for, like, major funding that we could never provide on a county level, but these are all just tiny little Band-Aids, I just want to be clear that these are tiny little Band-Aids to a bigger problem that needs way more funding than the county could ever provide, so it's just part of a, part of a piece of a puzzle, so thanks, guys.
Okay, we'll end it there, because this is just a donation, a CRV discussion could be, depends how quick.
Fern, I just think of it as, the boat is sinking, we need all hands on deck, so community, government, everyone, big problem.
Agreed. Motion is to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
Next item are claims, C2025-234, communication from the county clerk transmitting a claim filed against the County of Kohei by Christine Brody for vehicle damage pursuant to Section 23.06 Charter of the County of Kohei. On page four, C2025-235, communication from the county clerk transmitting a claim filed against the County of Kohei by Wade Tanaka for vehicle damage and loss of use pursuant to Section 23.06 Charter of the County of Kohei, and C2025-236, communication from the county clerk transmitting a claim filed against the County of Kohei by State Farm Mutual Automobile Insurance Company on behalf of Roger Lynn Dela Cruz for vehicle damage pursuant to Section 23.06 Charter of the County of Kohei.
Move to refer to the county attorney for disposition and report back as necessary.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
Next item are committee reports from your Committee on Public Works and Veteran Services, CRPWVS 2025-04.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
From your Committee on Planning, CRPL 2025-12, CRPL 2025-13, on page five, CRPL 2025-14, and CRPL 2025-15.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
From your Committee on Finance and Economic Development, CRFEED 2025-19.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
From your Committee of the Whole, CRCOW 2025-06.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
Your next item on page six is a resolution, Resolution Number 2025-38, Resolution Confirming Mayoral Appointment to the Board of Ethics for Kohei Waipaa Ex officio.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Move to second. Any discussion or public testimony? Go ahead, Ms. Carter.
I just have a comment. I'm really happy that we are, when it says ex officio, that means non-voting member. I am appreciative that we are bringing older teenagers into our process. It gives them an ability to understand civics and to have some influence on the, you know, what, what comes out of things, and so I'm supportive of this. I see that we did have a testifier, I think I know what his question is, so, but I would let him.
We do have one?
He, he raised his hand in the back.
Oh, okay. Okay, would that also suspend the rule?
For the record, Lonnie Seitzels, I agree with Member Cowden that this is very important for the community to demonstrate to the children of this community that there is a place for them in county and state government if they want to pursue that in their life, and even if a career in government or politics is not their passion, that they understand that whatever their passion is in life, it is affected by local and state government, and that it's always to your benefit to understand what process is and to understand how members of the public can affect process. The question that I have for the council, and really for the administration, because they're the ones that would be responsible for this, is now that this person is being appointed to the Ethics Commission, assuming that they're accepted and get on the Ethics Board, what training does a member of the Ethics Commission, not specifically this person, but all members of the Ethics Commission, what training do they get in how to discern what is ethical and what is not ethical, other than the very few words that are in the state constitution and the county charter? And so this is a matter of reflection for you as to whether or not the determination of what's ethical is only the very few things mentioned, or if ethics has a greater impact, and so what training is this, I'm presuming high school student, we're just out of high school, what ethics training are they going to receive, like all other members of the Ethics Board, to determine whether or not it's the kulianna of the Ethics Committee and Commission, and, and how they should decide what's ethical behavior and what's not? Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Hart?
For the record, Bruce Hart, in light of Mr. Seitzels' testimony, I'd just like to say, as an active member of the Christian community, a student of the Bible, and also always, as long as I can remember, being concerned and interested in just what is ethical and what is not, that I have never found a better source of ethical information than the Word of God. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I call a meeting back to order. Ms. Carter?
I, I have a little bit of an answer to some degree, that when we are in executive session, or what happens in boards and commissions, and oftentimes, the county attorney really puts an outline on some of the decisions and what the parameters are of the decision, and so somewhat, it's learning on the job. I don't, you know, it would be Ellen that would be the right one to answer really what the training for everybody is, but I want to just make the comment that I was very pleased to see the letters of support for Tyler Seitzel, is that he comes very prepared and gives a lot of answers when the questions are asked, and so it's a learning process, but I believe that the county attorney, their role, or whoever is in the board, the attorney that's in the board, their role is to be helping to clarify where the laws are that determine what is ethical given a given. that determine what is ethical given a given position, because it's not necessarily something just morally out there. It is what's allowed and what's not allowed by law. That's, that's.
That is accurate.
Okay.
That is accurate. I will say that, from my understanding and my experience, that as the commissioners come in, they do have an introductory training, they have orientation, they rely on, obviously, the other members that have been there, as well as the staff to the departments that they're assigned to. But I think the county attorney's office, as Ms. Cowden said, plays the biggest role as it relates to the Ethics Commission. It is the legal definition of ethics. The whole intent of the charter was to provide these commissions that were made up of laypeople and non-political, supposedly non-elected officials that can pass judgment or pass findings based on the information they're provided and the guidance they get from a county attorney. So that's kind of where it lies, and, but their obligation is to uphold the legal definitions of ethics. But Mr. Hart is absolutely correct. All right, with that, if there's no more discussion, the motion is to approve, roll call.
Councilmember Bolosan.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavallio.
Aye.
Councilmember Cowden.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Kanashiro.
Aye.
Councilmember Kuli'i.
Aye.
Council Chair Posel.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item, please.
Next item is a bill for second reading, Bill Number 2965 Draft Two, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter 10, Article 3, Kauai County Code 1987 as amended, relating to the West Kauai Community Plan Implementing Ordinance.
Move to approve.
Second.
I believe we have some amendments coming.
Thank you.
Who's introducing the amendments?
I'd like to move as.
Move to amend this.
Move to that as secondly, please, thank you.
Second.
Yeah, and this is just a housekeeping, you can see on the bottom.
Oh, got it. Just a name?
Right.
So where it says New Millah, Form Based Code at the bottom of the page. I'm making it strong for Mr. Sykos in the back, because he's asked before for amendments to be up on the screen, but it's just putting a footnote on the bottom of the page that highlights Form Based Code, New Millah.
Okay, for the public's information, the bill has these pages with a footer. And on the footer, it was incorrectly named New Millah, where it should have been Kaavenui. So all this does is replace, makes the name correct. And the footer of the bill doesn't have any substance other than a typographical error. So, that's it. As I read it, Mr. Bolosan, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Perfect. Anybody in the audience wishing to testify? If not, would that also suspend the rules?
For the record, Lonny Sykos. My thanks to either council members or staff, whoever it was that caught the typo. Thank you very much, that probably likely saved us a lot of money down the road having to deal with this issue in the future. Thank you very much, and all these pages of stuff, it's expected there'd be typos, and the more you use AI, the more typos you're going to get. So, thank you for catching us and saving us a ton of money down the road.
Anyone else? Not, a call a meeting back to order, and we'll give credit where credit is due. Based on this amendment, it came from the administration, so it was the planning department, I'm assuming, that caught that, so thank you very much. Anybody else, if not, a call a meeting back to order, any further discussion? Seeing none, the motion is to approve, roll call.
Councilmember Bolosan.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavallio.
Aye.
Councilmember Cowden.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Kanashiro.
Aye.
Councilmember Kuli'i.
Aye.
Council Chair Posel.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you, next item, please.
Next item is.
That was just an amendment.
Oh, that was the amendment, sorry, okay, I'm sorry, thank you. Would that, we'll come back to the main motion as amended, any further discussion?
I just want to say one thing that applies to all of us, is that I appreciate the work between the planning department and the landowners for allowing the potential for building these new plantation camps as we have this high need for housing. I want to express gratitude to the large landowners that would basically be paying quite a lot of money to create this. And so when they're able to house their own people, that's a savings from what might be available housing out there, and if they are renting to other people that they so determine, it's a good thing. So just for people who don't know what we're even saying yes to, we went through all this at committee last time, and I'm happy that this is, seems like a win-win for everybody.
Thank you. Anyone else, Mr. Kanashiro?
This comment will be for all of them. I'm just excited to see this pass and move forward. I'll be excited to see when these units actually start to come up. I realize there's infrastructure and things that need to happen for some of this to happen, but at the end of the day, you know, these units will incorporate the wildfire requirements that we went through, and there's a specific type of style that the houses are going to look like. They're plantation-style homes that are specified in the plan as far as what they can build, and, you know, it's going to be for, it's not going to be mansions, it's going to be plantation-style homes that fit in with the area and look. I mean, I really appreciate the way you guys did the plantation homes, you know, that each specific area has a different type of home look based on the homes that were actually there. And I think that was just, I'm just excited to see it actually come to fruition when it does. I'll be voting in favor of all of these.
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Holland?
I'll take the opportunity to also speak to all of these and really echo what Councilmember Kanashiro just said. I'm excited to see this respect the history of the area, respect the history of the plantation camps in a way that really helps to rebuild these homes in a way that really is Kauai-style. So I'm super stoked, I'll be supporting all of these as well.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we are back at the main motion as amended, motion is to approve, roll call.
Councilmember Bolosan.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavallio.
Aye.
Councilmember Cowden.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Kanashiro.
Aye.
Councilmember Kuli'i.
Aye.
Council Chair Posel.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you, next item?
Next item is Bill Number 2966 Draft One, a bill for an ordinance amending Kauai County General Plan 2018 relating to a parcel located in Makawale, Kauai.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moving second, and any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilmember Bolosan.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavallio.
Aye.
Councilmember Cowden.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Kanashiro.
Aye.
Councilmember Kuli'i.
Aye.
Council Chair Posel.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you, next item, please.
Bill Number 2967 Draft One, a bill for an ordinance amending the state land use district boundary relating to a parcel located in Makawale, Kauai.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilmember Bolosan.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavallio.
Aye.
Councilmember Cowden.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Kanashiro.
Aye.
Councilmember Kuli'i.
Aye.
Council Chair Posel.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item, please.
Bill Number 2968 Draft Two, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter 8, Kauai County Code 1987 as amended, relating to zoning boundaries in Makawale and Wahia, Kauai.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moving second, and any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilmember Bolosan.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavallio.
Aye.
Councilmember Cowden.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Kanashiro.
Aye.
Councilmember Kuli'i.
Aye.
Council Chair Posel.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you, next item, please.
Next item is Bill Number 2972, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter 16, Kauai County Code 1987 as amended, relating to the traffic codes for electric bicycles.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moving second, and we have anyone in the audience wishing to testify? Would that also suspend the rules? We have registered speakers? Okay, sir?
Morning.
Morning.
I'm Jim Benkert, I'm the owner and operator of Eco E-Bikes Kauai since 2019 here on Rice Street. Many of you have seen my store. I'll just read what I sent on Monday, hopefully you received my letter Monday. I'm here today to clarify recommendations on Bill 2972. As written, it combines several categories of e-bikes, creating confusion with riders and enforcement. There are, as noted in Hawaii and federal law, there are classes of e-bikes, Class 1 and Class 2 e-bikes, that motors up to 750 watts with a maximum speed of 28 miles per hour. However, the maximum speed with the motor only is 20 miles per hour. All of the bikes that I rent and sell are Class 1 or Class 2, and I've sold probably over 500 bikes and rented thousands of bikes to both tourists and residents on the island. The bikes, Class 3 and higher e-bikes have motors exceeding 750 watts and are capable of speeds similar to motorcycles. The bikes that we see speeding 40 and 50 miles per hour and doing stunts on public roads are not considered non-motorized vehicles and should be regulated the same as any other motorized vehicles such as motorcycles and mopeds. That is one issue. One other, current Hawaii law already restricts e-bike use to riders of 15 years and older, and it requires helmets for those 16 and under, as written. These laws exist and are largely unenforced, and I believe passing new regulations without first enforcing the existing ones will not solve any safety issues. A more effective solution is education and enforcement. I would suggest launching a public school awareness campaign outlining current age, helmet, and safety requirements. We all see kids 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 years old riding e-bikes. Anybody can go to any of our junior highs, Chiefess Junior High, if you go there, you'll see a row of bicycles, many of them e-bikes, at the junior high, and I would challenge how many of those kids are 15 years old and older at our public schools? That would be an opportunity, I think, to educate the school administrators as far as what the current laws are. And I pass out something that I would like to offer each of you at my store, defining what's legal and illegal in an e-bike. We had discussion last week with Captain Green regarding ticketing six-year-olds, and obviously it's unrealistic, however, an education program at the schools to let the administrators know that if they are under 16 years old, these e-bikes that are parked out here are not there legally.
Sorry, I'll stop you, that's your first three minutes. Is there anyone else that wishes to testify? Okay, we're going to go, you get three minutes in your first round, you get to come back and finish.
Sorry, a little bit long-winded, okay?
No, no, that's okay, you can come back, you can come back after we look through the first round. Mr. Sykos?
For the record, Lonny Sykos. Just one more item of food for thought for you guys. It's very, very simple to go online and order an e-bike, electric motor, and swap it out for the one on your bike. I had a friend here who used to run a business, he moved to the Big Island now, but that was one of the services that he provided was, if you had an e-bike, he could help you install a larger motor on it. And so they're much easier to modify than a motorcycle or a car is to increase the speed of the vehicle. And so in the big picture of regulating all of this is the issue of the bike that someone bought at a shop or at Costco or whatever that appears to be compliant with the law may not be compliant because it's as easy as swapping out three or four bolts and an electric unit and unplugging and plugging the new one in. And so part of the regulatory problem of trying to keep the speed of the bikes down is, number one, the ease that you can increase the speed. Secondly, there's, at this point, no enforcement mechanism other than city and county of Honolulu that has a device that you literally put the bike on and run it, and it measures how fast the wheels spin. That obviously is a very expensive machine and very expensive per test. And so I don't know what the solution is, but I do know that this is an exceedingly complex issue, much of which has to do with federal safety guidelines and federal safety laws that we have to comply with. We don't get to make what the limits are for the machines. And tip of the hat to the shop owner that's running the business correctly, trying to be legal. And I think that the county needs to get in front of the state and very proactively bring this issue to the public. And in response, at middle school, if you're a parent sending your child to middle school on an electric bike who's less than 15 years of age, you are at risk of coming into contact with Child Protective Services. And so that's food for thought for the parents that put their kids on these bikes illegally. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? Seeing none? You have three more minutes.
Okay. I'm sure there are ways to make them go faster than they're manufactured to do, however, as the person who's worked on them for five years, I would have no idea how to open up that circuit box and tweak it. I'm sure it can be done, we went to the moon. But let's deal with what we can. The manufacturers already limit them to Class 1 or Class 2. Most of the states in the country have determined that a Class 1 or Class 2 is a non-motorized vehicle. It's the ones that go faster than that that we're having problems with. So my first suggestion would be to identify them with Class 1 or Class 2 stickers or license them as an e-bike, it'd be very simple to do so. Second thing is to educate the public. The third thing is to enforce these rules that we already have in place. And the last thing would be to invest in safe cycling infrastructure. To have safe places for bicycles would increase not only the usage of bicycles, it would decrease traffic, which we obviously have problems with traffic. It's environmentally friendly, it's better for the health of people. So it is something that is advisable, I think, and valid, and things that we need. We just need to figure out a way to regulate and make it safe. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question. In your testimony, you said that it contains several definitions and regulatory gaps that may lead to confusion.
Yes.
Which part of, so we have basically two definitions, you know, 750 watts and below, and 750 watts and above, what's?
In the beginning of the bill is written, it states that electric bikes have motors of 750 and won't exceed 28 miles per hour, but electric bikes in fact can have motors of up to thousands of watts, not just 750. They're still considered e-bikes if they have two motors of 1,000 watts and will go 40.
Right, but then it would be, that's covered in the second definition.
Correct.
So I'm not, I'm trying to.
The first part of the definition, what we're wanting to regulate is Class 1, Class 2 versus Class 3 or higher.
Okay. So again, I'm just trying to figure out, right now, as it's written, we're saying that electric bicycle or e-bike, for the purpose of this statute means a bicycle equipped with a fully operational pedals and a motor of no more than 750 watts capable of more than, less than 28 miles per hour. So that's clear, right?
Yes.
I'm trying to understand your testimony, it is confusing.
It doesn't state in the beginning of the bill that that would be considered a Class 1 or Class 2.
Yeah, well, because we're not looking at classes. We're just, it's covering two sets of bikes. Number one is 750 and below, and there's a black seven.
Correct.
So I'm trying to understand, because I want to make it clear, I don't want it to be confusing. I don't see it as being confusing, but I'm trying to get that.
Okay, I don't have it in front of me where I can read it exactly, but if it's clear, we're okay, I think.
Yeah, it's simpler, I mean, I think it's more complicated if we go Class 1 and Class 2, and Class 1 and Class 2 basically is what the first definition is saying.
Class 1 and Class 2 are considered non-motorized, anything more is considered motorized.
Okay.
I have a follow-up.
Go ahead.
Are you saying that it would seem more, it would make more sense to have this bill be only about Class 1 and Class 2 and not try and address high-speed electric bike device? devices? Are you saying it'd be better if it didn't have that element in there because those aren't, those are motorized bikes rather than?
I believe, I believe that a Class 1 or Class 2, considered non-motorized, anything greater than that is already regulated against use on the public streets as a, the same, similar to a motorcycle or a moped. Thank you. My comment on, in clarity, electric bicycle or e-bike means a bicycle equipped with fully-operated pedals and electric motor, no more than 750 watts, were legal to be operated on public roads unless they were licensed.
Three or four, basically.
Correct.
Okay.
I don't.
So this is not going to affect your merchant?
Not, not at all, other than I, I want, I want the kids to, kids are riding high-speed bikes and doing wheelies and in and out of traffic, and it, and it's scary, and it is for all of us, and I, I do want to help with the regulation and, and make a difference in that domain.
I'm also in agreement with the testifier that the main purpose of this bill is to keep children safe. I know, you know, the KPD is here. Are we gonna hear? I'd like to hear any concerns that KPD has. I want to be proactive, I want to be friendly, I'd like to hear if they have any concerns. Enforcement isn't going to be easy, but that's not an excuse to abandon it.
...of this bill, so they don't have any issues with the bill.
I'm wondering if I could talk to Calavio from Transportation. I see he's in the room. Transportation. I see he's in the room.
From Transportation?
I mean, yeah, he's our DMV.
Yeah, okay.
Can I?
Yeah, I'll suspend the rules.
He's here.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, yeah, I'm anxious to hear.
Thank you so much for being here. I do have a couple of questions about the high-speed bicycles.
Do we would manage those devices?
Yeah, are they considered a bicycle, an e-bike, or is they considered a motorcycle?
Well, we would have to definitely look at this to determine the class that it would be in. I think generally speaking, from a consumer standpoint, most of these things are far exceeding the wattage requirements, the max speed requirements set forth by your device ordinance. Base models, 8,000 watts max, which is fast, like a motorcycle. So like the previous testifier commented, regulation of mopeds which have max speed comparable of 50 cc's, about 2,000 watts, these would be really considered motorcycles, licensure requirement, safety check, registration, tidling.
So the high-speed electric device is really more like a motorcycle?
Well.
Or a moped?
I'm, I'm struggling to define it in the regard that there are lots of manufacturers out there, and our due diligence requires us to look at the manufacturer's spec requirements for those devices. They're pretty wide-ranging.
So when we heard from the last testifier, Jim, that you could put side mirrors, headlights, blinkers, and so forth on these, how does, if somebody went to the DMV with their electric bike, high-speed electric bike, some of them I guess are made by motorcycle manufacturers? Is, is that right? Do you know?
I'm not sure of the manufacturer's origins, ma'am.
Okay, so if somebody came in with that and they tried to get a, a little license plate for their high-speed electric bike, is that possible?
If it's been manufactured to meet the federal motor vehicle safety standards requirements that the federal government sets forth, those would include some of the things that you mentioned. If somebody tries to come in and have them registered under our current ordinance and laws, we wouldn't allow it just because of the max wattage of the engines and the max speed that they can go. They would also have to have, you know, pedals that are actively able to be used and all of the other things for them to be given a permanent bicycle license.
What about?
We wouldn't do that.
And you couldn't give them a motorcycle license either?
If it's manufactured for off-road use, which is not typically how manufacturer's paperwork reads, it's possible that they could, but they also have to meet the federal motor vehicle safety standards requirements, which many of them don't. Many of them don't have a VIN that's readable by the federal standards. There are a number of conflicts, I think, with the intended purpose and use of those devices versus the way that our rules would require it.
And so, you are comfortable, it feels appropriate to you that we have both electric bicycle and high-speed electric device on this same bill? Did you look at this bill?
I was sent a copy of the bill in the afternoon, ma'am. I haven't really read through it in detail. I'm happy to do so and follow up.
Okay, thank you.
I think the question, and this is important for the community, because we receive a lot of, you know, just, just have them go register as a motorcycle, but that's covered by 286 HRS, the Hawaii statutes and not county code. So I think the state needs to be looking at, you know, looking at Chapter 286 and.
I'm with the DMV at the finest apartment again, sorry, I don't.
Yeah, I know.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's why I was anxious to hear the question.
I mean, I, I meant DMV.
Maybe they designated you the new e-bike guy.
No, no, I, I, I'm sorry. I meant DMV. I was looking at you, and I'm sorry. They're both, both things move, that's the bus. I'm, I'm sorry.
But you clarified the, the Chapter 286. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Because it's not, I guess the reason I asked that question was not just that the county can go and add these bikes into Chapter 286. That's not for us to do, it's the state. Any other public testimony? Seeing none, I'll call a meeting back to order. Any further discussion?
I, I have some discussion, and the reason why I was bringing that up is we both received a letter recently, but I also got a call, so I went and walked about, I don't know, two, three miles, maybe a little bit more, with somebody who is a, a high-speed bike owner. We walked along the Kappa bike path, and we walked along some of the Kappa streets. So he was very good at pointing out to me which are the high-speed bikes and which are the e-bikes. And almost all the young riders on either were problematic and not, not respecting things. And then, almost all the adult riders that were on either weren't problematic, and we saw more of the adult riders on the, on the high-speed bikes on the main roads. But so, there was a concern, you know, feeling like the kids are getting these e-bike riders, I mean, the, the high-speed bike riders in trouble. So I was just trying to figure that out because it seems like people, you know, really use these as transportation, and I saw that written in a, in a letter that we received. I don't see a copy of it right here, but we got that maybe yesterday morning.
It should be in your.
Is it here?
Yeah, from Dr. Mangle?
Yeah, okay. Oh, yeah, here it is, here it is. So I looked at his, and I had done that walk, and, you know, I think a lot of what I see, probably a third of what I see in my town are the high-speed bikes. You know, I see both, but the high-speed bikes. So I'm just kind of curious about where the enforceability is, and so I, I thank Department of Motor Vehicles Director, sorry, Lee, for, you know, just saying, you guys can't really make that determine, you can't make them, uh, street legal. That's more at a state level, and it sounds like it depends on the structure of the frame and the vehicle identification number. So I, I'm basically answering this question for the people that are concerned, because it looks like there's probably a good chunk of the people who are on e-bikes, and those are, as we had a testifier say, $4,000 to $5,000, so it's a pretty big investment. And do you, Chair, know if those are legal at the state level? I mean.
The high-speed bike?
Yeah.
Not at this moment. I, I think I go back to what Mr. Lee said, it, it depends on, on the bike itself, but current, I think the vast majority of these electric, high-speed electric bikes are not considered a motorcycle.
So in my vote, I'm not opposed to this bill. I'm, I'm loosely, largely supportive of it. My concern with the bill is, we aren't enforcing it now when it's almost everything that this makes illegal is already illegal, and it's, what I think that we saw is, the state already has those things illegal, like you can't be riding all these things at 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 years old. And when we spoke with police and prosecution, it was very difficult. It's a civil fine. So I will vote in favor of this, but I'm not optimistic that this is going to make a difference. I like the suggestions that Mr. Beckett made about putting a sticker on the bikes that have the level that they are. And, you know, I think we had last time, people saying there should be, it was actually our police traffic division person saying there should be a notice in the stores, so I would think that's an administrative element, certainly not a council element, that those are, you know, regulations that could go out there, but I think we have a lot of people riding around that, that don't know the difference. And so, the person who took me on the walk had thought that his use of the bike had been legal until we had this in front of the council, and he saw this, and it was disturbing to him to think that he was somehow breaking the law.
Yeah, well, yeah, I read his, his, his email, and, you know, he's asking for a path forward, and the path forward is, again, getting the state to recognize those things and, and having these operators go through a licensing process, like you do with a motorcycle. You gotta know the rules of the road. You gotta, you gotta, you, you need to show the examiner that you can operate that motor vehicle, I mean, that motorcycle. And it's not an easy course. At the stadium, I took it. I would never pass it with a Harley, so I borrowed a friend's Kawasaki 175, and I was able to get through those cones quite easily, but you get a Harley, it's very hard. These electric bikes, you know, they gotta show the examiner that they can operate it safely, and I think that is all, that's the difference between an e-bike, which is limited to 28 miles an hour max, versus 80 miles an hour on an electric, high-speed electric bike, so. We definitely will reach out to the state to see what their plan is. The other thing is, whether it's enforceable or not, I, I know that's, you know, that's not a reason not to, to set the law, but when we met with the prosecutors and the police department, the intent, a, a big part of this, the motivation to do this was to use this bill as the educational tool to, to the schools. And now being able to say, hey, you know, we have a, we have a county law, we have a state law, all of those bikes that you have, you allow your kids to park in your school parking lot are illegal. They're too young to drive those bikes, and you guys are allowing them, you're giving them, you're guys' accomplices, you know, you're allowing them to drive that thing to school. So it's, hopefully, and I know that the prosecutor and the police department were very open to starting that educational campaign, and I'm expecting them to do so, but that was the motivation, was to really get this thing and to keep our kids safe. That, that's what this is all about. That's what this is all about. I, I did want to, because I had received a bunch of emails from, from people suggesting additions to this bill, and one of them was adding, requiring lamps, lights, you know, during hours of darkness, and that is already in the state law. That, that is, you know, if you drive at night, you see these bikes from far away when they have those flashing LEDs. That's already required in the state law, so we didn't see that it would be prudent to duplicate it again in a county law, but it is under the state statute. And I wanted to clarify something that was said last week here at the meeting, because the state law is clear that if a bicycle lane is provided, that the bikes shall use the bike lane and not the sidewalks, and I know that was kind of misstated last week. So I want people to understand, if a bike lane is, 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 is there for, a designated bike lane, not a shoulder, but a designated bike lane, that they are not to be on the sidewalk. And I, I bring that up because I had a Mr. Imperato in his testimony, and I agree with him. He's saying, you know, why are we disregarding the safety of the kipuna that use sidewalks in the interest of people that ride bicycles? I agree with that. The sidewalks are put there for the neighborhood people to walk. So I know it was stated last week that, oh, some of our bike lanes are more dangerous, so it's okay for them. That's not true. The state law prohibits that clearly in 291(c)(145). So I just want to make that point. If there is a bike lane, the bikes cannot be on the sidewalk. That is what's in the state law. Any other discussion? Ms. Holland?
Yeah, I just want to thank you, Chair, for all your work on this. I think, I think it is a tool for education. I do agree that the education and enforcement is going to be an issue, but that's not what this body does, so, I mean, we, if this saves a child's life on Kauai, then I'm grateful for it. I think I 100% agree that we should be pushing the state to update the laws and facilitate a path forward. I'm a pretty big fan of liberty and choice, especially for responsible adults, and I do think that we need paths for people to legally, safely operate these, but again, that comes from the state, so I just want to emphasize that. And yeah, I'm going to be supporting this, and I appreciate all your work on it. Hopefully it keeps some children safe, and it's used to educate our community.
There's a lot of people that worked on this, not me. There was a lot of people in KPD and prosecutors and county attorney's office and everyone else, so. Anyone else? Mr. Bulisun?
Yeah, I just want to, again, echo all the work that has been done in this body for fleshing out some of the things. It's typically, it's, society is, advancement and, and, and technology tends to go a lot faster than regulation and carefulness. We learn after accidents and things that we wish never happens, and so, we, as a body, can't ever move fast enough to catch up to rapidly changing times, so I'm in support of this, and I know it's a step in the right direction, and there's many more things that we got to adapt to, so I appreciate this body being open to working on these.
Thank you, Mr. Kuli'i.
Yeah, I just think it's a good time now to, especially for everyone, to do the necessary outreach and education, and when Councilmember Holland talks about responsible adults, I do believe that most parents would do the right thing if they know what the law is, so it's important, parents out there, to know what the law is and make sure that the young person you might be buying a gift, a bike for this Christmas, make sure they're of age, and if they're under 18, make sure you buy a helmet with the bike as well, so.
Mr. Calavio, just, well, everybody said pretty much everything, but just to follow up on the clarification on the path and the bike, you know, the walking path and the bike lane part, so I think that's very important in the bigger picture. And then encouraging our families, parents to support, you know, make sure that their, their kids are safe, and that age group part is another one that is still on the table, but overall, without repeating, I think we're on the right path to Malo.
Thank you. Anyone else?
You know, I, I was, this morning, I got a text from a friend who's a bike rider, both bicycle, motorcycle, off-road, he does it all, and, and he, he was the one that sent me the thing about the lights, the requiring, having us add in that section about the, the lights during dusk, dawn and dusk and dark. And, and he opened up the conversation by saying, hey, you know, when, when you see a bicycle riding down a road with a flashing beacon, what, what does that tell you? I said, that tells me it's a bicycle, that I need to be careful. He said, no, that tells you that it's a responsible bicycle rider. And that made so much sense. That was profound. Like, yes, you know, that person was smart enough to put a beacon, not for himself, it is like three bucks at Ace, right? You buy that little thing, clip them on the back. I mean, I told him, if I was riding a bike at night, I'd, I'd have, I'd buy a ton of them and put them all over my body. I'd be a flashing Christmas tree when I'm like, I'm going to get hit. But that was his point, was, you know, we have responsible bicycles, bicycle riders, and we don't. We have some that are not. This law needs to address the people that are not, and that's what this does. So, and what is not covered in our county law is covered in our state law. So we just don't want any kids to get hurt, and, you know, we talked about, you know, I think Fern brought up the freedom, yeah, we all, we all support freedom. You're responsible, do what you want, until someone gets hurt, until a child gets killed, as they have been in Honolulu, and all of a sudden, then the whole world goes upside down, and how come we didn't do anything about it? Why are we reacting to the danger? And that's what this does. We're trying to be proactive. We're trying to make sure this goes out a, and, and is part of an educational campaign that will inform our parents, hey, go buy them something else next Christmas. Don't buy them that bike that it's illegal for that kid to ride. So hopefully, hopefully, this has some benefit going down the road. So with that, thank you guys all for the, for the assistance, and with that, the motion is to approve Roca.
Councilmember Bulisun?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavalli?
Aye.
Councilmember Cowden?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Conishiro?
Aye.
Councilmember Kuli'i?
Aye.
Council Chair Opozo?
Aye.
Seven items.
Next item, please.
The next item is on page 7, Bill Number 2974, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter 23, Kauai Conico in 1987 as amended, relating to the regulation of business and trades. This is for taxicab rates for touring or chartered time.
Any discussion or public testimony? Again, all this does is increase rate two, which is the hourly, I'm sorry, the rate that our local taxicabs charge for extended periods of time. So you have the regular miles in time, we're not affecting that. This is just for those that use their taxis as somewhat like a tour. And we're just upping the base rate because it, because it has to adjust to the cost of living. I'm not sure how you guys got by with the cost of gas going up so much. So it is one that we probably should revisit every, a lot sooner than every eight years or so. So with that, any questions? Anybody know as wish to testify? Seeing none, the motion is to approve, roll call.
Councilmember Bolosan?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavalli?
Aye.
Councilmember Cowden?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Conishiro?
Aye.
Councilmember Kuli'i?
Aye.
Councilchair Puzo?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Motion carried. With that, we will take a recess. So we are executive session. Let's meet in executive session.
Should we begin executive session first?
Yes. So, good job. I'm in such a hurry to get into executive session. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cowden. Roll call.
Shouldn't we read it?
Yeah, read it.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. ES 1154 pursuant to Hawaii Vice Statute Sections 92-4, 92-5A4 and Kauai County Charter Section 3.07E. On behalf of the council, the office of the county attorney requests an executive session with the council to provide the council with a briefing discussion and consultation regarding the quarterly pending and denied claims. This briefing and consultation involves the consideration of the powers, duties, privileges, immunities and reliabilities of the council and the county as they relate to this agenda item. And ES 1155 pursuant to Hawaii Vice Statute Sections 92-4, 92-5A4 and Kauai County Charter Section 3.07E. The office of the county attorney requests an executive session to obtain settlement authority, Darryl Perry versus County of Kauai et al., case number 19-1-0113 and related matters. This briefing and consultation involves the consideration of the powers, duties, privileges, immunities and reliabilities of the council and the county as they relate to this agenda item.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Holland. Can I have a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bolosan?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavalli?
Aye.
Councilmember Cowden?
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Conishiro?
Aye.
Councilmember Kuli'i?
Aye.
Councilchair Puzo?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
We are in recess, and let's report in executive session chambers, and let's do 10 minutes.
Hey Carol, we'll be back soon.
Meeting is now called back to order. Mr. Brecken.
So ES 1154 and 1155 are both held in executive session. The one is regarding pending and denied claims, the other is regarding an active lawsuit. The discussion needs to remain confidential and there's nothing to disclose to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, this meeting is adjourned.